Two, just in the stopper.
Well, no, that one's upside down. I can't do that.
All right, everybody. It is six thirty. So like to call to order. The workshop Zoom meeting on September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Uh, the minutes for September sixteenth. Is everybody okay with them? And we could have passed them.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Uh, under communications and announcements, there's talk of towns issue. New business, scheduled workshop meeting, the proposed local law number three. Addition of wellhead protection overlay. So um, I've got a copy of it. It's eleven pages long. And if anybody else needs to see it.
Um, I read it a while back.
Okay, if we need to, maybe Judy can put it on the screen. So so since Ken's here. I would like to just have Ken address the board. And tell them why the law was made, how it's gonna work, and how it will affect the planning board and planning board members, please ask Ken. The questions that you have. Okay, Ken?
Well, you may be asking the wrong person. Cause uh, I suppose we ought to go back to a little history. This got. Back in December two thousand fourteen, like seven years ago, the town board. Set up a committee to review the aquifer protection law, which had been supposedly reviewed and passed up by a previous town board, but never got filed properly with the uh. Uh, the Secretary of State. And so a committee of Jay Wink and Laura Ricky and Jerry Washington and Ed Sanders was appointed. Uh, to polish up the law and to resubmit it. And I think the expectation at the town board at that time, because I was on it, was that, you know, this would take a year to do. Well, now, seven years later. We're still debating this. In two thousand sixteen, uh, after several revisions and several reviews by the the planning board, the uh, final version of the law was submitted to the planning board. Uh, the planning board in May of two thousand seventeen essentially said, don't pass this law now. And uh, submitted a, you know, rather lengthy letter with with a variety of uh, explanations on it. Uh, that got then, the whole process of the whole question of the of the law got turned over to the uh, comprehensive plan. Committee, which as the uh, letter said, the comprehensive bank committee would of course endorse having an aquifer protection law. This is sort of a a no brainer. Uh, so the comprehensive plan was approved in November two thousand eighteen, and then January two thousand nineteen. Uh, the the town board actually started implementing the comprehensive plan. At that point, they set up the, what they called the zoning revision committee, which you're probably familiar with, which is uh, headed up by by Laura Ricky. And that committee was given the responsibility of dealing with the language of the town, of the. Of the zoning law, of the the aquifer protection law. At that same time, the state had announced this uh, source water protection program, which the towns could apply for, and I suggested that we apply for that. I was told this was not part of the comprehensive plan, but if the supervisor wanted to apply for it, he could do that under his infrastructure. Responsibilities. So we applied for it. Uh, and and we were approved. We applied in June of two thousand nineteen, were approved. And finally had our first meeting with the Department of Health in October of two thousand nineteen. And at that time, I was instructed that the language of the law was responsibility of the zoning revision committee. And that we were to deal with the infrastructure questions, which I identified as three from the town, the planning board's letter. One had to do with the extension of the sewer system out to Bearsville. And we did quite a bit of work with the Department of Health on that question, and we submitted a report. I don't know if I gave a presentation to the planning board, but certainly you got a report on that. And the second issue had to do with the mapping. Uh, the. The planning board had said the mapping was uh, inconsistent or confusing. And so we said, well, as part of the natural resources inventory, we could do a brand new map and include all the documentation that was submitted by. Uh, Brenner, not Brenner, Laros, by uh, Steve Winkley from the Rural Water Association and by uh. Horsley and Witten and put that on a new water resources map, which we released about a year ago.
Again, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, forgive me. Who instructed you?
We instructed us.
Yes, who instructed? You said you were instructed.
Those is the supervisor and the town board. We presented several, we made several presentations to the town board of what we're gonna do. And it was quite clear from Laura and the supervisor that we were not to be, not to address the language of the law.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Uh, cause that was, you know, that that was their their responsibility. And they were not addressing the question of the sewer system. They were not addressing the question of the maps. Nor were they addressing the the other recommendation of the planning board made was for an educational program for the uh. What we called the the wellhead protection district.
Good. Thanks, Ken.
So at this point, September, we submitted a a new map. Which was actually the natural resources.
Yourself.
Water resources map. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, John's muting.
He got it. Sorry.
And it included the uh, for the most part, included the information that was in the. Winkley maps. Which I think was the copy of the map you received with the law the last time it was submitted. And the uh. And the water protection area that was submitted by a uh, Horsley and Witten. So that's where we stood. And uh, the. The zoning revision committee approved submitting the uh, revised. Law uh, law in February two thousand nineteen. That was submitted to the town board in March. It got submitted to the planning board in April. The planning board responded in May saying, we can't use this map because it doesn't have mets and bounds. And at that point, I suggested, well, we should be using the map that we developed as part of the NRI because it has mets and bounds on it.
To to correct your statement, Ken, when you sent that law, you didn't send a copy of the map. So we didn't have anything that really told us where the limits were.
You didn't have a copy of the map at all?
We did not understand that what you sent us was related to the map. We have since gotten a map from you, and I just found all the stuff, I think everything that you have emailed, so I've got it where I can bring it up if you want it.
Well, that's because I was not involved in the process of sending it to you. I mean, I I had a foil to get the information that you got. Oh, but this all came from the zoning revision committee and from the town board, and I was not part of that process. We were off on the side doing technical work. And we submitted this map a year ago to the zoning revision committee and to the town board. And uh, maybe to the planning board, I can't remember, but.
And I thank you for your emails to us.
Yeah, I've got them all. I think I've got them all identified. I certainly have the map and the law, where if you want to see them, I can put them up on the screen.
Not well. Judith, that that background is so funky, I could barely wrap my mind around anything you're saying. So. Excellent.
I'm not in a position to explain. Uh, the purpose of the law. I have, you know, again, I was told not to deal with the language of the law. And so we were just dealing with the maps. And uh, when I presented, you know, when I went to the town board and said, we should, this was August tenth, and so we should be using this NRI map. Uh, Laura presented this other map. Which I don't know, I had never seen it before. It looked nothing like a a a Winkley map. Which that I have, you know, lots of. And the uh, it was mislabeled as far as what the uh, the wellhead protection area was. And that's kind of where we're at.
So is this presentation on on the dysfunction of governance or?
I don't think it's dysfunction, it's just the way things work.
Or no?
I think the answer is yes.
But uh. You know, I I. I can't explain to you the law because I was not involved in developing it. You know, it was, it's been a seven year process. And this was done by the the watershed or whatever, whatever Jay Wink's committee of Jay and Ed Sanders and Laura Ricky and Jerry Washington. Of course, Jay is no longer with us. Jerry is having serious health problems right now, so it's kind of. Uh, you have to deal with Laura and with Ed to understand the development of the law and what's in it.
Well, Ken, the only reason I read, and I was the one who said, we can't do anything with this without a map, without meets and bounds. There was nothing that so it said where anything was. And a map or a surveyor's meets and bounds will tell you, and otherwise, the map has no no use. I mean, the law has means if you don't know whether you're inside or outside the district. So what what you've been working with that follows the the parcel edges and the NRI data is what we need to have, and the town ought to adopt it.
Well, that was our recommendation, and that was our recommendation uh, back in September two thousand twenty. This is at the town ought to be adopting this map as the basis for the aquifer protection law.
So, well, I guess the big issue for the planning board is, once we settle the boundaries, so that we know when a case comes before us, if it's in the boundary or not. The question for the planning board is. How do we apply this to our planning process? I mean, yes, there's a whole list in the in the pro in the law of what's permitted and what isn't. But it's not different from what's permitted anywhere or not.
Yeah, I agree. What the hell do we do with it?
In other words, you can't put a atomic power plant or a chemical plant anywhere. So I don't know what we would.
Well, a gas station maybe, but I don't know if you could do that in that area anyway.
No, uh-uh. No way. No way. So I I don't know what we review, when it, when a case happens to come within that boundary. Um, what is it that we're going to do different?
Is this considered a workshop?
Yeah.
Just checking. Thank you.
So, you know, we can. Uh, back to the original documentation, which was firstly, wouldn't that define this uh, wellhead protection area, which really over the. You know, where the septic tanks are. I mean, that the the Bearsville area, and he said, well, you know, you gotta be careful what you dump on the ground, because that's that's. That's gonna enter the water system. Which is a lot of sense, and I'm sure you probably worked on those sorts sorts of things already. And there's, you know, there's other considerations like fertilizer and and uh, household chemicals and pharmaceuticals, which your educational program requirement or.
Right. Cause that wouldn't come before the planning board if somebody was gonna fertilize their lawn.
Right, I mean, that, but those are sorts of things that people who live in that area should be aware of. And but until the town board, actually, I suppose it is defines what the wellhead protection area is. Based on zoning considerations, there's not much we can do. I mean, we have the engineers said this is where it should be, but that follows, you know, underground considerations of the aquifer. But you, like Judith points out, you really need to do mets and bounds, so you can tell, was as a property owner, you can't fertilize as much as this guy across the street can, because he's not across, he's not in the uh, overlay district.
So you're running for town board again?
No, no.
Yeah, so the, I mean, so the issue is, Ken, um. That it, the process would come from the building department. If there's a, if a property is coming for the planning board, the building department would tell the planning board that it's in the wellhead protection area. How would we know?
Well, supposedly the zoning map would tell you.
Yeah, but we don't get a, we don't get a case unless somebody tells the homeowner that they have to bring it to us, and that's usually the building department.
Yeah. Well, I think that, well, I. Again, I can't explain what the law says, because I'm not familiar with it.
Who's running the the building department now, Butch or Ellen?
Ellen. Ellen.
The Butch is an employee.
I mean, if the building, if the law required a special use permit to build something in the in the Bearsville flats, then it would come to you, but I don't know if the law.
It depends on what kind of a thing it is, I think.
Yeah.
The way I read this law, it doesn't say that it requires a special use permit.
Yeah.
But our question is. You know, I think we, we have a couple of cases that may be in the in the in the district, but wha- what would we do different? Um. I mean, if it's a subdivision or a flat line revision. We don't look at use, we don't look at what's in the buildings, we don't look, you know, it's residential to us. So I'm not sure what we would do, even if a lot was in the uh, in the wellhead district.
Well, until the, until a map is accepted by the town board, we can't even tell you where the district is.
That was my point back when we first got asked about it. Peter's point about not knowing what to do if it was in it is at least as important, but you have to know where it is before that even comes up.
You look at the at the Winkley maps, the wellhead protection district is, follows the uh. Recommendations from Horsley Witten, which is quite small. It's the uh, you know, it's the Bearsville flats area. But if you look at the map that Laura gave us back in in the. August tenth. It covers the whole area.
Well, this is what you sent me.
Yes. So this is the NRI map. And the wellhead protection district.
Is this orange line, I think.
Everything within the purple boundary, huh?
No, the orange line, I think.
I see, I see.
And the purple is the aquifer, I think.
Okay.
Right, the these, these crosshatches are the underground aquifer.
Right.
Right.
Purple line is supposedly the water protection area, which is really supposed to be an area that's set aside for future development of possible wells. But now the zoning law that has been proposed and the map that Laura showed me. Has this whole area. As the wellhead protection district, which means that. Properties which are developed. You know, along here would have the same restrictions as properties which are developed here.
Judith, I'm always the slow one on these maps. Uh, can you orienten, orienting me on uh, where's the, where's the town square at? Or where?
The town, the town square is right about here. It's slightly off the map.
Okay, thank you.
And and this starts out. Around Como Drive, I think. No, here's Como Drive. This little squiggle here is Como Drive.
Okay.
Right, and to the far, far west is the Bearsville complex in that upper corner.
Right, right here.
And those green, green circles are the wells themselves.
Right. And I think the the reds are tanks, aren't they?
No, no, the.
No, they're wells. The reds are wells.
They're wells, and then this is a tank. This star thing is a tank, and there's some others in other parts of town. I have no idea what those are for.
The tank is up on the, o- overlooking, is up on the.
There are some, yeah, there are some.
And also California Quarry Road.
Right.
But for instance, now, we just had to get Bearsville uh, complex before us for a major uh, site plan review. And it's directly within the wellhead protection area. What would we have done different than what we did? I mean, would they have gone through a different process? Because they're in the wellhead protection?
I I can't answer that question. I mean, the uh.
I mean, I mean, in other words, they have a big parking lot there and have a lot of parking cars. I mean, would we have had to make them have underground holding? Uh, you know, so the water gets held and filtered and 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 everything, you know, I'm not sure what. In other words, we have in the past, in the uh, in the industrial zone, when we did some work there. We we made them have the cash basins in the in the parking lot be contained and go through uh, oil stringers, so that no oil would leave. But um.
Peter, what was presented to us, I think what you were convinced that that wasn't necessary with the compound, right?
Well, they're not paved parking lots. They're gravel, so they would filter to some extent anyway.
Right. I was giving an example. I was just trying to think of what we would do. In those districts, in that district, um.
And and there's, you guys do this. Like, we have seen other cases when we had. Uh, IPA, innovative product.
That's the one I mean.
Same in front of us, and you know, like, they started with a lot, but then they went down to just the garage base, but. Right off the bat, you wanted catch basins, and you asked for this, and you asked for it to be on the plan.
Like Howard Stern, we did. Howard Stern, we made him put in uh, uh, traps, grease traps in the catch basins. But they have a paid parking lot, so it is different.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So anyway, if that's the, if that orange line is the area, we really wouldn't get much out of there coming before the planning board, I wouldn't think.
No, I wouldn't think so.
There's not much left to develop. But um, but Judy's point is that we, how do we know exactly where that line is, and that's the course.
Well, I think the way it is drawn now, it is following parcels.
The purple line is, yeah.
Yeah. This is not.
That's not.
Hence, my question about meets and bounds is crossing property lines. So does the uh, gateway. It crosses property lines, but we have meets and bounds. It says two hundred. Feet off the center line of two twelve or something like that in a couple of places.
Right.
I tried to get mets and bounds drawn on that map. We had a person from the Department of the Ho- of the of Health, Department of Health, help us with this map. His management said, you can draw the underlying aquifers, but you cannot draw mets and bounds, because that's a decision that has to be left to the local authorities.
Which is the town board.
Which would be the town board, and I've asked her, you know, I've tried to get some GIS assistance, because I'll put in the the uh.
Who did, who did you ask for GIS assistance?
Well, the last request was back to the the Environmental Commission.
Ken, other than George, Jerry Washington, as far as I know, I am the only person in Woodstock who knows how to do this stuff.
Yes.
So if you want to ask me, I'll be happy to do it.
Great, then we'll we'll put in the uh, mets and bounds, put on polygon and draw around the uh.
I mean, I don't know how to convert convert what the parcel map that I get from the county says to things that you could verify on a GPS, because a lot of them are clearly off.
Yeah.
But I can certainly draw an outline that incorporates the existing parcel map.
Well, that we should do that.
I agree with you. That's what I've been trying to say.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the the only thing is, like, on the north part, where the o- orange line crosses two twelve. Um, it goes right through the, right there, it goes through the center of properties. You'd have to make it just be two twelve.
Or you'd have to go up around the edges of the properties.
Or around the whole property.
Why not?
Yeah, go along the edges of the property.
I'd rather get a little too much than not enough.
Well, I suppose that's true. I mean, you could just take that whole western purple section and draw a line from right across and 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 then you got it. But from where your hand is, from where your hand is down, south, yep, right now to the purple line.
Yep.
Yeah, right there, if you just drew that line from top, from two twelve to there.
You tell me to do it, and I'll do it.
Yeah, we just come down that road.
I don't think, I don't think.
I would not use this. I would go to the NRI that I got, which should duplicate this, but it's in ArcGIS file format. And create a new, and create a new shapefile.
Yeah, please, please correct me if I'm wrong. We we currently, we we work backward on this, so if once something is. Comes before us, then we consult our maps, and if we have any questions, then we we dig in a little bit, right? So that's what's gonna happen for the most part. Am I wrong on that or?
No, that's true. And Ken's point is that, you know, we, the planning board can't make this map, the the town board has to do, I mean.
We can draw, we can draw it, but the town, we can draw it, but the town has to approve it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
We can put that line in. I'll take it to the town board, ask them to approve it.
Absolutely. Okay, I will do that. Give me that line and you've got it.
I asked, use this one.
Sounds like a plan, sounds like a plan.
I could do it before the next meeting.
So this local law, number three, it has been passed, correct? This is, this is.
It has not passed.
Has not passed, okay, okay.
But I think if we, if we finish this map, we send it to the town board, the the town board accepts it. Then we can have the law written to apply to this map.
Exactly, exactly.
Because unless you have the map, the met, the town, the law doesn't mean anything.
That is, that is the point we were trying to make when we responded to them.
Yeah.
All right, well, but we got a plan, then. Judy's gonna make a map.
I will do that by the next meeting.
And Ken's gonna take it to the town board.
I'll take it to the town board.
I'll send you a PDF, Ken.
Great.
Ken, tell Rich and Lauren, this is the last thing they have to do before then.
Well, you know, there's a a tradition among town boards that they, well, first of all, they always have an end of the year meeting, you know, like on New Year's, like on New Year's Eve, where they. Finalize the budgets and so on, but when they want to pass something controversial, that's when they do it.
Oh, that's called taking out the garbage.
Huh?
That's called taking out the garbage, according to the.
Well, it's not taking out the garbage, but you know, there's a lot of things you have to do at the end.
No, no, but see, that's what they call it. They release all the stuff to the press on Friday night. They call that taking out the garbage.
The original town, the original Woodstock Town Board was like passed, zoning law was like passed on eight o'clock on New Year's Eve of whatever year it was passed.
Right.
Well, shit, this isn't controversial. They want something controversial, I could come up with a few things.
Yeah. I think we all could.
All right, Ken, well, thank you so much for uh, enlightening us here.
All right, I will send it to everyone, including Ken, and you can tell me if I missed something, and then we can finalize it. And recommend it.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, thank you, Ken.
All right.
So what else we have is uh, under discussion and comments, unfinished businesses to approve a resolution from Ostramont, Galoski, and Kelman, if somebody wants to. Offer that for a resolution.
So resolved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, everybody, well, at least we had a workshop.
At least we resolved.
Made more work for ourselves. At least for Judy.
Well, you know, it is really not in any way a big deal. It is really not. I just needed to have some directions from somebody that says, we really ought to do this. So. Now that I know how we want it done, I will do, probably do it this evening, until we set it off.
All right, Melissa, if you don't have anything, we can entertain a motion for adjournment.
Yep, we're good.
You okay?
Setting a record, Peter.
I know. Okay, all in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, everybody, thanks a lot. Have a good.
See you in October.
Yes, next week, next week.
I know it is.
Peter, I have a question for you.
What's that?
I was in town uh. Yesterday. And I swear to God, there were thirty dump trucks. Going up and down, you know, the main drag. And I would have to say half of them had concrete in it, broken up concrete. Do you have, is that just a coincidence or something unusual, or do you have any, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I know nothing about it.
Was there a name on the dump trucks?
Yeah, construction zone and uh, with signs.
Were they county or or private or?
It looked like a combination of all, and I've also seen him going up and down Ohio. Last Friday, there were probably twenty to twenty-five dump trucks. On Ohio. Yeah, I don't know what's going on, but something's going on.
I mean, unless it's a major project.
Were they working on the bridge? Was Highway working on the bridge?
It's a good question.
Oh, the bridge out in Boise, out past Boise, who you mean?
No, no, our town. What, was it?
Our bridge.
Bridge going on somewhere? I don't remember. I just. Bridge going on somewhere? I don't remember. I just vaguely remember hearing.
Yeah.
Is that concrete all fill?
No idea why they would be doing that. I mean.
I was just trying to give you a reason that I overheard.
What direction were they moving in, Brian?
Towards the town and then back up after they were empty.
So they were leaving something within the town boundaries?
I don't know if the town boundaries. I don't, I just know they were driving through the town west.
That was my question.
O-Hale, they were driving towards the town.
Well, sorry, but I, I don't, I don't know anything about it. Unfortunately, I was on top of a mountain, so I didn't see it.
Yeah, you know everything, so I thought I'd ask you.
All right. Have a good evening and a good weekend, everybody.
You too.
Thanks, Peter.
Hey, John.
Take care, John.
Peter, come sign when you're in town.
Okay.
Thank you. I hope your life feels better.
Okay, thank you. Okay.